Good evening. Welcome to the June 13th, 2023 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. If the city clerk would please take the role.
Stevenson?
Here.
Bulow?
Here.
Hayes?
Here.
Esslinger?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Mugawar?
Here.
Seven present.
Next will be led by the council member Stevenson will lead this invocation, followed by the Fledge of Legions.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
The collective legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next up, we actually go to introduction of staff. We're going to have... Ah, there we go. Take it away, Mr. Robby.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'm introducing to you Craig Grantham. As council may recall, a meeting or two ago, you were introduced to Mike Blank in a new role in facilities maintenance. Craig is stepping into the position that Mike moved out of in engineering. So Craig is moving into the construction management supervisor position. Craig has been with the city for the past 10 years, that entire time within the engineering division. Prior to be promoted to the construction management supervisor, he was the lead surveyor working on various public works managed projects. Prior to that role, Craig was an engineering technician performing mainly topographic surveys. And when he joined the city in engineering, he was a project inspector on our construction projects. Prior to coming to the city, he had a construction inspection role with the city of Green Bay. Craig has degrees in civil engineering technology and in construction management. So we're really looking forward to... Craig's jumped in here in the last month, month and a half into the role and has really kind of taken over. So we're excited to have Craig filling that role now and filling that vacancy while we work on filling some other vacancies that have been created because of it. So Craig, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure. Just thank you, everybody, for having me. It's nice to meet all of you. And I look forward to continuing my career with the city of Oshkosh and working with all of you and the city residents as well. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
All right. Next, we move into public hearings. First one actually was withdrawn. That's the... That was the Red's Pizza Liquor License Non-Redoal Hearing. So we'll move into number two, Resolution 23-266, approved final resolution of special... for special assessments for contract 2301, concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, pavement, sidewalk new and rehabilitation, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals new and relay, water main and laterals new and relay, and storm sewer mains and laterals new and relay for Wisconsin Street, Annex Ave., West Bent Avenue. And that's it on that one. So that's the first reading. It looks like we have two people registered to speak tonight. So I've got to read this thing three times, but we can open up for public comment right now, correct?
Yes.
Yep. So it looks like we have... First one up was Catherine Williams had registered. Yep. If you'd like to come up to the microphone over here. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for giving me the chance to speak. I just... I live on the corner of Bent and Wisconsin and just kind of wanted to express my concerns with the special assessment. This is my first home. I bought it here in Oshkosh because I love Oshkosh. But I was not prepared for this. I support the house myself alone. I work two jobs, barely make ends meet. And so getting a bill from the city for $12,000 was a little bit startling. And I just wish that there was a better way that could be done. I've lived in other states and based on what my parents have said, that's not how other states handle things. My parents were going to move here. They are now considering not moving here and looking at other options because this is how the city of Oshkosh handles these special assessments. And living on a fixed income, they are also not prepared for that. I will most likely have to sell my house in order to pay for this and have to move away, which is not my first choice. But I don't have the ability to add it to my taxes at 4% interest or anything else. And so these are real consequences of how this is handled. And I would just really urge the city council to look at other options so that it doesn't hit residents this hard. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a question for the young lady.
Yep, Ms. Williams.
If you could come back. The staff did talk to you about payment options over several years. Is that... I mean, you are aware that is possible?
I am aware that that is possible.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was one over.
Yes.
All right. Next up, we had Kathy Kits. Hopefully I said that right. Or it got close.
Welcome.
My name is Kathy Keats, and I live at 1262 Wisconsin Street. And I'm concerned about the construction also because we have never really been told anything about the resolution, what all was involved or anything else until we got the final assessment. And it has hurt several people, especially the ones that live on the corner, as Catherine has mentioned. And I was just hoping that the city would have had this session at the beginning of the construction. And with the rain and everything, I'm wondering now when they're actually going to get started, how long it's going to take. And if we do want to pay upfront, do... Does it go on our taxes this year or next year? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll read it two more times, then we'll have a chance for some discussion and we can ask some follow-up questions of city staff. Resolution 23-266, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2301, concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk new and rehab, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals new and relay, water main and laterals new and relay, and storm sewer mains and laterals new and relay for Wisconsin Street, Annex Ave. and West Bent Avenue. If there's anyone who'd like to speak, this will be the third and final reading of Resolution 23-266, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2301 for Wisconsin Street Ave... Excuse me, Wisconsin Street, Annex Ave. and West Bent Ave. Thing is, there's no other... Public hearing will be closed on this one. We'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Wessling.
Thank you. Mr. Robby or Mr. Roloff either. Again, refreshing my memory back when I was on the council the first time, we did contact residents initially. It was an initial contact with an estimate of the assessment and the options of paying and whatever interest. Have we gone away from that?
No, there have been several letters dating back to last August, September that have been sent out. The initial estimate is what came with the notice of tonight's public hearing. That is just an estimate at this time. The final numbers and the certification will not occur until next year, at which time the final numbers and then all of the payment options and the opportunity for the property owners to select which payment option they wish to utilize will be sent out at that time. So those letters will go out likely around August of next year.
So one would have been the initial contact for the impacted taxpayer that the project was going to be done and estimated cost?
Estimated costs would not have been received until the notice of this public hearing because staff cannot work on preparing the estimated costs until the initial resolution is passed by the common council. But the initial notifications that the project has been included in the capital improvement program are sent out August timeframe with the common council approving the plan for the capital improvement program in August. Now, we send those initial letters notifying property owners that their street has been included in a proposed project in August and letting them know when the common council will be discussing those planned streets in the CIP. So there are a number of meetings that occurred last year where it was talked about. And then there were additional letters sent in January of this year as we started getting ready for construction, letting them know what was going to be coming, how they could sign up to receive emailed updates on the project, who to contact as far as questions about the construction project. So I believe at this point in time, we... Our office has sent probably four to five communications to all the property owners, you know, starting August of last year.
Okay. And I understand, you know, when you said that the estimates aren't sent out until, I mean, you actually do the footage and have the engineering and the cost from the contractors. While that makes sense, I'm wondering if somehow we can't state the year before because, I mean, like the lady said, and this happened to me, I've been involved in it, you get whacked over the head on this thing, and it's very expensive. Isn't there some way we can say the year out, just so you know that, you know, these assessments can run in the thousands of dollars and there is a process? Is there something the council needs to do to allow that to happen?
Well, estimates cannot be prepared until the initial resolution is passed. However, we do a public information meeting. We... The last... Since COVID, we have been also recording the public information meeting as a media program with Andy and Jake down in Media Services. That does contain information about what the prior year's rates were. So, you know, we do put that information out with the public information that goes out in August. I sit down with Andy and we record a presentation. It's posted to their YouTube channel. Links to that are included in the correspondence that we send out in August, letting people know how they can get more information about the projects. So the costs for the prior year, for example, the per foot cost for street assessments are included in that presentation. So there is, you know, while it's not an estimate of, okay, your property is 100 feet times, you know, the assessment rate, we don't have that level of data, but we do let them know what the estimated, you know, the per foot cost of the prior year's projects were.
And that's on the documents that are sent out a year prior to?
The letter contains information on how to get to the presentation. I can't mail them a video or anything, but we do.
No, I just wanted to make sure it was on the correspondence that was sent out to them.
Yeah. And it's on the documents that we post to the capital improvement program webpage, which all of that information is in those letters as well.
Okay.
But in reality, I think you're pointing out that until a name and a number is next to that name, it's not as appreciated as much. But it certainly... The notice grabs their attention. The other ones talk more in generalities. It was this much last year, but it doesn't say, you, Ms. Wessling, will pay this much, you, Ms. Hayes, will pay that much. It just kind of says a more general thing, which doesn't grab the attention. The notice grabbed this lady's attention, and that's why she's here tonight. And we understand that because we've been talking about assessments for a while now.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bulow?
Thank you. I think that's... That was going to be my next point is that we have talked about assessments for a while. And I know I've talked individually with, I think, all the members up here about what a priority this is and what it has to be. Because this resolution is 21 pages long. And when I poke through it, it's not all 21 pages of tables of the assessments. You know, there's other things in there. But there isn't a single assessment in there that I would want to have to pay. And I know that's true for every citizen here. So I know that I am committed to trying to find a better way for Oshkosh to do this. Unfortunately, right now, this is currently the system that we're under. This is the law of today, that this is the program that we have to pay for these streets that are... I think we need to do better in the future, and that's what we have assigned Mr. Roloff to come to us with some really good recommendations. And we have some workshops scheduled for that. That doesn't help you today, and I understand that. But I just wanted to make that clear, that this is something that we are aware of. And I don't think that, you know, $12,000, $11,000, $13,000 is acceptable.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'll just weigh in quickly, get it over with up. I have to say it later. But there's 191 cities and villages in Wisconsin, over 140 use special assessments. So the fact that we use them isn't rare. But we are top five per capita in the cost of our special assessments. And I... To me, that's what the problem is. So I continue to hope to see... I know we're going to see some various proposals to cap special assessments because I think if we can cap them, we can solve two problems. We can bring down our averages so we're not an outlier in terms of our per capita special assessment level. But then more importantly, we're not having these instances where we price somebody out of house and home with these nightmare assessments.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Just a question. We're talking about potentially changing the special assessments. Their bill will be due next year. Hypothetically, if we were to change how we do those special assessments, would this affect their costs right now? Or would it be retroactive for the next kind of group of assessments?
That would ultimately be a decision of the council. And that is one of the issues that the council has wrestled with in the past. When do you make it effective?
Sure.
Who's in front of the cutoff line and who's behind the cutoff line? And that is... I've had conversations with many of you on this very topic. And that is something that you're going to have to struggle with.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion on Resolution 23-266, if you'll take the role.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
carried seven.
Resolution 23-267, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2302, concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, new and rehab, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals new and relay, water main and laterals new and relay, and storm sewer main and laterals new and relay for West Lincoln Avenue, McKinley Street, Elmwood Ave., Cherry Street, Wisconsin Street, Wright Street, Jackson Street, John Ave. and Scott Ave. I don't have anyone registered to speak to this one. If there is, now would be a good time to come on up. Second reading of Resolution 23-267, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2302, concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, water main and laterals, and storm sewer main and laterals, West Lincoln Ave., McKinley Street, Elmwood Ave., Cherry Street, Wisconsin Street, Wright Street, Jackson Street, John Ave. and Scott Ave. Third and final call for public hearing for Resolution 23-267, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2302. Seeing none, public hearing will be closed. I'll need a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on 23-267? If you'll take the role.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 23-268, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2303, asphalt pavement and driveway aprons, South Washburn Street. I have no one registered for this one. If there's anyone here, now would be a perfect time to step up. Resolution 23-268, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2303, asphalt pavement and driveway aprons, South Washburn Street. Third and final call, public hearing 23-268, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2303. Seeing none, I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If you'll take the role.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Public hearing for Resolution 23-269, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2304, asphalt pavement and driveway aprons, Osborne Avenue. Second reading, public hearing resolution 23-269, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2304, asphalt pavement and driveway aprons, Osborne Avenue. Third and final reading, public hearing resolution 23-269, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2304, asphalt pavement and driveway aprons. Seeing none, the public hearing will be closed. We'll take a motion in a second.
Move it. Second.
Any discussion? If you'll please take the role.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Public hearing for Resolution 23-270, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2307, concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, new and rehabilitation, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals new and relay, water main and laterals new and relay, and storm sewer main and laterals new and relay for Clark's Court, Hollister Avenue, Oak Street, East Lincoln Avenue, Beach Street, West Bent Avenue, and Hobbs Avenue. Second reading, public hearing resolution 23-270, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2307 regarding Clark's Court, Hollister Ave., Oak Street, East Lincoln Ave., Beach Street, West Bent Avenue, and Hobbs Avenue. Third and final reading for the public hearing on Resolution 23-270, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2307. Public hearing will be closed on this. I'll need a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the role.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next public hearing is for Resolution 23-271, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2308, concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, new and rehabilitation, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals new and relay, water main and laterals new and relay, and storm sewer main and laterals new and relay for Arthur Avenue, Tyler Avenue, Coolidge Avenue, Bowman Street, and North Sawyer Street. Second reading, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2308 for Arthur Avenue, Tyler Avenue, Coolidge Ave., Bowman Street, and North Sawyer Street. Third and final reading for the public hearing of Resolution 23-271, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2308. Seeing none, the public hearing will be closed. I'll take a motion in a second.
Move it. Second.
Any discussion? If you please take the role.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Public hearing for Resolution 23-272, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2309, asphalt pavement, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals new and relay, water main and laterals new and relay, and storm sewer main and laterals new and relay for Bradley Street, West 28th Avenue, West Wauka Avenue. Second reading for the public hearing on Resolution 23-272, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2309. This is for Bradley Street, West 28th Avenue, West Wauka Avenue. Third and final reading of the public hearing, Resolution 23-272, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2309. Seeing none, the public hearing will be closed. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If you please take the role.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Item nine on the agenda, Resolution 23-273, public hearing for approving final resolution for special assessments for contract 2320, storm sewer laterals, various locations. Second reading, public hearing, Resolution 23-273, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2320. And third and final reading for the public hearing, Resolution 23-273, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 2320. Seeing as there's none, I'll close public hearing and take a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Ford?
Question for city staff. I had a resident contact me asking about whether there was a waiting list for this program specifically in the current year, if somebody canceled or something.
I don't think we could get somebody in into the current year. I'm not sure how we're at, Justin. I think we're pretty caught up, aren't we?
Yeah, no, we've done a good job the last number of years to get that backlog worked down. We had a couple of people request here in the last month or so where the plans were already completed and we couldn't add them in this year.
Okay.
So they should be in next year's program. And again, we have no waiting list at this point in time.
Awesome. Thank you. And it's an awesome program, by the way. And my neighbor thanks you because I'm no longer flooding his backyard.
With that said, would you like to maybe take 60 seconds, give us... Give those at home what this is about, what he's talking about, why it's a good value and what we're doing here?
Sure. No, the mini storm program is a fantastic program that's heavily subsidized by the Stormwater Utility. But it gets residents that have sump pumps that just drain in your neighbor's yard, drain over the sidewalk, causing icing in the winter, algae slippery in the summer, to help get it drained to the public storm sewer in a way. So basically taking the surface water and getting underground.
Okay. I think it's 750 bucks?
Correct.
It's a pretty good value. All right. If there's no other comments, we'll take the role.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Bulow?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we're on to citizen statements to council. Citizens wishing to speak should have registered through the city's website or the Connect Oshkosh app. Citizens are addressed council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting. It must not include any endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. I have just one, Ms. Patty Deener. Good evening.
My name is Patricia Deener. I'm kind of disappointed in the council and the people tonight with their computer out here. You guys work here. You should know the computer. This young lady wanted to learn how to do it. She didn't know how to do it. And it's sad. It's very sad. It should have been set up before the meeting. And I'm coming to you this evening in regard to Memorial Day. Memorial Day is every day. It's not just a holiday. These service people will fight for our country, their wives, their spouses. I was disappointed. I didn't see anybody from the council at the ceremony. We had one chief, fire chief, come. You know, nobody's happy. This country is turning bad. You guys have a job to do. And you're going to do it. People are going to be hounding you to get things done. But we fought for our country. And there's a big episode in town, too. You can't go to restaurants. You can't go in stores. You know, I don't mean to point to him. Our officers are social workers. It's sad. We have a... We got a county, and the officers are handling everything. Where is our county workers? What are they doing? You can't go in a store and they say things to you that I enjoy, the new pivot, blue people. Their name is red. There's things going on in town. I went to him because they have a manager there, but I wanted him to know what's going on. He hires people to do the job. And I... Him and his wife, and his wife, see me and daughter, and they know how I stand. Sure, I'm not happy all the time. But you know what? When you go in a store, you better have respect and not being downgraded. And you know what? I learned from my county workers and my city workers and my bank workers, all my colleagues I work with. We couldn't not do what's being done today. If I was in the courthouse and I pulled some of this stuff, you know what I would do? I would lose my job. And these police officers, the captain, I had a talk with him the other day, and that's what's happening. And it's wrong. And we lost a man who wants to retire. His name is Kevin Callen. I went to him a lot of times. That guy knows me from top. His name is Kevin Callen. I went to him a lot of times. That guy knows me from top to bottom. He knows how I feel, what I went through. He was at my house when I had, have work done with my husband. He was there to comfort me. And that was his job and not being mistreated. And so is Robbie. I don't know his first name. That guy ran the whole crew for the city of Oshkosh task force. He stepped down. I went to him, too. These men have worked years, 34 years or longer. And you know, your body says it's time to hang it off. And if there's a problem in the city of Oshkosh about something going on, I'm telling you right now, I am not gonna apologize to a person. I did not do wrong. That person did wrong. You open a meeting, a closed meeting, it's wrong. And I'm not gonna end it. It's wrong. I don't care who it is. And this is what's going on. People are yelling about recording. I was told years ago by Chief Gonya and all the chiefs, Erickson, if there's things going on and you can't take care of it, record it or video it. Now because I do it, people don't like it. Well, you know what? It goes for anything. It goes for building a fence, building a house, anything. And you know what? I know the laws. I'm not attorney. I don't have a, uh, degree in college. But I'll tell you, I stand up for what I think is right. And you know what? There is a ju- a discrepancy. And you know what? God's gonna take care of the discrepancy because I did what's right and God will honor it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deener. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council this evening under citizen statements? If not, we'll move on to consent agenda. I have no one registered to speak under consent. I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Builo?
Just wanted to talk quickly about item number 29, resolution 23-288, Winnebago bicycle use of North Main Street. I was there when Winnebago Bike opened 10 years ago, and I'm glad that they are still there on the corner of Main Street, um, helping people enjoy bikes. And I'm just really excited for this event.
Very good. Any other discussion on consent? Seeing none, if you'll take the roll.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Consent carried seven.
On to pending ordinances. Ordinance 23-291, this is a zone change from heavy industrial to heavy industrial with a planned development overlay for property located at 3300 Metalist Drive, Marmaxx Holdings LLC, owner Richard Fisher, Fisher &amp; Associates LLC applicant. Plan Commission recommends approval. I have no one here registered to speak on that. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if you'll take the roll.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 23-292, zone change from heavy industrial district to heavy industrial district with a planned development overlay for properties located at 3400 to 3454 Jackson Street, SDJ Properties LLC. Plan Commission recommends approval. I have no one registered on this. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if you'll take the roll.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Onto new ordinances. We have, uh, ordinance 23-293, repeal section 2-37 of the City Municipal Code pertaining to the Committee on Aging. Staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on first reading. I don't have anyone registered on this one, so I'll take, if interested, I'll take a motion in a second to waive the rules and adopt on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on waiving the rules? Seeing none, if you'll take the roll on waiving the rules.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 23-293, repeal section 2-37 of the City Municipal Code pertaining to the Committee on Aging.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I just want to thank the, uh, city administration for, and it's right there in the, in the ordinance change, for meeting with the Committee on Aging and inviting them to continue to participate, um, on their mission as a private non-city group. And hopefully they are receptive to that. My understanding was they were.
Yeah, and I also want to thank Oshkosh Media. They've already reached out about creating a program that they can use to talk about subjects that the Committee on Aging has been talking about for years, and they want to keep that out there. And it'll actually create a nice library of topics for, uh, for this, uh, the aging community. So we're real excited that we're able to do that for them.
Excellent.
I just want to add, um, no, just want to, a thank you to those who serve in the community aging, uh, currently, as well as in the past. Uh, you know, thank you for serving your community. Um, you know, these are, um, they're thankless jobs, right? Um, they, you're sacrificing personal time to, to serve the community, to help better the community. And just want to say thank you to them, uh, for all the efforts that they've done over the years on, uh, on the Committee on Aging. So I'm thankful as well that, uh, city staff was able to work with those members who are interested in, uh, continuing to serve in some fashion and, and thankful that, uh, we're able to accommodate and, and keep them on board, so.
I think they're very excited. I think for some of them, this is actually a preferred option because they can talk about these issues. So, um, looking forward to the programming that Oshkosh Media is gonna do with them.
Great to hear. If there's no other comments, if you'll take the roll on 23-293.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
New resolution. We have resolution 23-294, general development plan and specific implementation plan review for addition of personal storage facility use at 3300 Metalist Drive, Marm- uh, Marmaxx Holdings LLC, owner Richard Fisher, Fisher &amp; Associates LLC is the applicant. Plan Commission recommends approval. I have no one registered for this. So I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 23-295, general development plan and specific implementation plan for outdoor storage area located at 3400 to 3400, uh, 3454 Jackson Street, SDG, uh, SDJ Properties LLC is the owner and applicant. Plan Commission recommends approval. No one registered on this. I'll take a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, when you're ready, please take the roll.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Final resolution, resolution 23-296, approve annual city licenses. These are renewals. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, when you're ready, please take the roll.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Sorry. I forgot, I forgot you. Builo?
Aye.
You're right past ya. Esslinger?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right. We're now on to council discussion, direction to city manager, and future agenda items. First thing up, a future agenda item, um, update on boards and commissions committees, study and implementation, direction on requests from this, uh, museum board, and sustainability advisory board. We do have a member of the public who had registered to speak on this, so we'll let Ms. Davy go first, and then council can have their discussion. Welcome.
Thank you, Matt. Um, yes, I'm Margie Davy, 85, Portside Court. And I'm here to speak on the future discussion, which I guess is coming right up, of reducing the size of the sustainability board. Since our inception, the SAB has consisted of eight members plus a council liaison. More recently, two alternates were added. This is an ideal size for this particular board because sustainability literally encompasses so much territory that we need input from a varied group. Prior to June 1, we had three members with extensive education and knowledge of all things sustainable, along with a biology, chemistry expert, an analytics expert, two strong citizen voices with long-term practice in sustainability advocacy, and two new appointees that we had not yet met. When the mayor chose to cut the SAB from eight members to four members, we lost two members with extensive education and knowledge of all things sustainable, our but, our expert on biology, chemistry, which is a huge help in understanding sustainable technologies, and both new appointees. While the remaining members are knowledgeable and dedicated, four people plus a council liaison cannot accomplish in an effective and timely manner nearly what the previous team was capable of. This is a critical time for sustainability, for Oshkosh and for the world. It is not the time to hobble the board. I'm sure you recall last fall when we asked for a sustainability director within the city to help bring in relevant grants, of which there are currently tons, in part because of the Inflation Reduction Act that seeks to diminish and mitigate the effects of climate change, which, whether you believe in it or not, is a real thing. Instead of supporting the city sustainability board, the June 1 appointments cut us in half. Why? The SAB had very few issues through the years with attaining quorum. If other boards, committees, and commissions had issues, it doesn't need to affect the sustainability board. The only meetings in recent memory that were canceled was because the SAB didn't have adequate staff time to gather and prepare the information that we needed for topics we had identified as being relevant and timely. While I'm sure the process discussed by the council is appropriate in some cases, cutting the sustainability board is not. It's like shooting yourself in the foot before running a race. I know some appointment, reappointments are contained and were contained in tonight's consent agenda, which are appreciated. But as our June meeting made abundantly clear, having excellent and well-informed people, citizens volunteering and serving for free, serving as alternates, does not provide the same synergy to the board. We need them appointed, reappointed as full board members so we can do the best job, the job that we want to do for the city. I'm hoping you will decide to return the sustainability board to full strength, or at least reduce it to no less than seven. Anything else is a travesty. That's my thought.
Thank you very much. Now through, uh, council discussion and direction to city manager, um, I don't know if, I think staff had put this on there because you'd like some direction from us on how to proceed forward. Currently, um, we've seen, uh, two ordinance updates, um, a few, a few pieces of action, consolidated transportation committees into one. Um, we just, um, took care of the Committee on Aging part of the, uh, the recommendations from the, from council member, um, former council member Miller and deputy mayor Erickson. Now, basically what's left before us is, um, we need to formally take action on reducing the number of members on the optional committees. Some had nine, some had seven, um, but the recommendation was to move down to, uh, five plus two alternates. Pretty good summary so far?
Yeah, I'd say so. The, um, the remaining optional committees are, uh, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, which currently has nine members, council member without voting rights, Sustainability Board has nine members, um, the Long Range Finance Committee has nine members, eight citizens and a council member, and the Parks Board has nine members, eight citizens and a council member. So, uh, the, the two committees, I think Ms. Davy expressed the, um, the thoughts of the SAB very well. There were some similar comments from the museum board, uh, and I would probably agree that with the observation of some of the museum board members that typically attendance has not been an issue for the museum board, nor the SAB. Uh, so I think that those comments are, are valid, uh, comments that they made. But the council's resolution was to go to five for all of them, so, uh, that would be our intent unless council wanted to give us some direction to prepare it a different way. This still isn't the final action because council still has to adopt the ordinance. But before we bring the ordinance, I thought it was appropriate to update you on where we were so far and, uh, where we, where you would like us to go. I would say that the Public Arts Committee had, I'd say, a similar response, uh, similar to, um, uh, the Committee on Aging. Uh, they, um, see the opportunity, and I think Ms. Phillips and I did a, a pretty good job of explaining how we viewed, um, th- their role in the, um, the museum board and whatever that would be named. I think even the museum board was like, what's it gonna be named? And I, I think that's more important to them, uh, as it should be because they'd be people who are interested in it. But there were members of the Public Art Board that were interested. Um, Public Art Board, um, we will still maintain, um, as a stakeholder group, they're this close to finishing, uh, some ordinances that will be coming to council very soon. So Ms. Nyforth and her staff will continue to work with, it was kind of a subcommittee of the Public Art Committee anyway. So we're gonna keep working with them to just make sure we get to the finish line on the ordinance. And then I think even they agreed that perhaps that committee's work was, uh, i- if not done, at least significantly changed, that they, they felt they could move on with that. Um, and I think there were some interested people on public art interested in the museum board. So it'll be interesting to see what profile of people come together for that, that new group. So that's kind of the update and happy to answer questions, um, or, you know, just you talk about it and tell us how you wanna, us to draft the ordinance. You still have final say on it when we bring it to you.
Deputy Mayor Erickson has the floor.
Thank you. Uh, just to kind of, as a reminder that within the recommendations report that, uh, we approved kind of as a concept a couple of weeks ago, um, the group size, the kind of guideline of, of five members plus, uh, two alternates, um, we did add in, uh, that there could be an exception that council determines if there's special circumstances for a particular border commission. Uh, so if there's, you know, a particular, uh, interest or unique purpose of a border commission, we could decide that for that particular border commission, uh, to deviate from that, uh, standard size.
I think, um, but actually, if anybody else wants to go first, I can save mine. Councilmember Hayes?
Yes. So admittedly, I think I'm a little, um, confused from our last meeting because I didn't realize that although we approved the recommendations within the report, I didn't realize that we would be cutting the, uh, boards and committees as, at least I've been informed that they've been cut. Um, it's my understanding, just from feedback that I've gotten from a few people, is that, um, some whose, uh, terms were expired, they were told that they would not be recommended for renewal. Um, but there wasn't, at least as far as I'm aware of, a look at the committees, uh, boards or commissions that could actually go down, um, from nine to five, um, and who would be best. So for example, having been a member of the DEI committee, um, before my time here, um, as a member of council, there of course were problems with attendance. What we have right now for DEI, um, is that the process used to not renew those whose terms expired has left DEI, it's basically nonexistent, which is similar to what the county's DEI, um, committee experienced. When I say it's nonexistent is that since I have been on, when I was a member of that committee for the past year, the people who showed up consistently to do the work are the exact people who have been told their terms will not be recommended for extension, um, leaving the ones that, quite frankly, in a year I've not met, which now leaves the DEI committee unable to work. While last month's meeting, there was not quorum, um, for whatever reason, we will continue to run into this problem. And if this is how we're deciding to, uh, determine the remaining five. I didn't realize that the process would be to, uh, not extend those who continue to have an interest and dedication and commitment to their committees without actually looking at who we can eliminate because they truly have not contributed since they were appointed three years ago, two years ago, without it being expired. And when I And when I attended the sustainability meeting this past month, what was evident to me, just observing and trying to get an understanding of how this board works is that they do fall into the exception that was recommended in the report. They each, so each of their members have just the specialized knowledge and a commitment to this. And I think it was jarring to the sensibilities in which their commitment, the lack of issues that, the whole reason this report was committed, that they were not experiencing, lumped them into that. And with their specialized knowledge and commitment that they've had, I think that they do fall into one of the, do fall into that exception. But I also take issue with the route in which we're deciding to eliminate those on the committee by simply saying that because your up, your term has expired, you would not be renewed. We at least have DEI that will be left unworkable. And that's concerning to me, especially because of, as we are in the community, what I just, not being a member of this council, would hear is that the, one of the goals was to eliminate that. And so this is frightening to me to see this play out the way that it did because it, to me, supports the idea or the scuttlebutt or rumor that that was the intention. I do not agree with the way that the process was rolled out. And even if it was going to be a slow roll of implementing what was in the report, that slow roll was not in fact slow at all. It was aggressive. And it's left people feeling unappreciated. It's left boards and committees not what, not being able to serve as they were supposed to. And so that's what I like to say on that.
Councilmember Beal?
May I ask Ms. Davy a follow-up question?
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
Thank you, Margie. Nine members on the SAB. Is, is in your mind that the ideal number because of the expertise that these specific nine members have? Do you think five members with a different subset of expertises would be right? And the reason why I'm asking, I'm going to clarify my question more, is I do think that maybe this is the right time for an exception. I don't want to get into a situation where maybe the expertise changes on the board and then we have to come back and look at it later. But are you, is your opinion that nine members is, is the right because of the different expertises? Or do you think that nine members is the right because of the scope of work that is done? Can you speak to that, please?
Yes, to both questions. We have had, in the last 10 years, we have had rolling types of expertise. We happened, when we were advising on the facility, the new facilities building, for example, we had a construction engineer who was a member of our, of our board. That was very helpful because he thought of things sustainability-wise that the architects maybe hadn't considered or we were able to encourage, that sort of thing, because he was on there. That was fortuitous timing. Right now, one of the people who has been removed from the board, although you reappointed them, him tonight, as an alternate member, happens to be the UWO Sustainability Director. They are an award-winning college, university in the entire country. Why would we want to get rid of his expertise when we can have that collaboration between the city and the university going on and make us both better? There. It's, it's like when we have people apply because somebody's leaving. I've been probably too proactive in, in wanting to find out which, who's applying and what their specialties are because it makes sense to me to have a well-rounded board. And I don't mean like well-rounded like me. I mean like lots of different, you know, lots of different things coming on. And we find that those different viewpoints are very helpful. I mean, we have somebody who worked in the city of Appleton in the sustainability area, although they're Oshkosh resident, obviously. We have people that have, we have three people with sustainability degrees. Why does the university have that if it's not teaching somebody how to do something for sustainability? And they're volunteering, they're giving the city all of this for free. And I know one person in that particular situation, the first thing that I heard from them was, I didn't even get a thank you. I'm off and I didn't even get a thank you for time served. I don't think it was handled well. I don't think the process made sense. Like Lakisha said, if it was supposed to be a slow rollout and watching previous meetings, I thought that's what I had heard as well as promises that we would be discussing this with people as it happened. But if, if you're going to cut it down to seven or five, and I hope you don't, but if you, especially if you feel it has to go down to five, do it like two people a year so that we can continue to get institutional knowledge among those that are left. What we've got left is a brand-new member who has no, I, I don't mean that, that came out wrong. She, she has a very strong interest in sustainability and is very anxious to work with us. But she doesn't have the sustainability degree that we have just lost two of. She doesn't have the expertise that we had with our Doctor of Chemistry and Biology, which was quite helpful in many cases. So I just feel like you kind of gutted the board. And you left me, I don't have a degree in sustainability either. I can't run a meeting. That's kind of my kind of thing. But everybody has one superpower and I guess that might be mine. So did I answer your question, Carl?
So if I, if I understand right, it's not the nine number, it's the different voices that that provides you is what you're looking for?
It's, it's the different voices that that has the capability of providing. Otherwise, if we only have five voices and one is a council member, which we like our council member, don't get me wrong.
I have zero degrees in sustainability. I have lots of degrees, not there.
I understand that. You never know when we might need to go to turn it on. What that leaves is four people that are sustainably educated, maybe, or have long-term practice with it. What if one of them is on vacation and somebody else calls in sick? I mean, it happens, people get sick and a third member can't make it because the plumbing went awry and, at his business that day. We're screwed. There's, our quorum gone. When we have nine members, we can actually have four people that aren't able to make it and we can still have the meeting. And we have had a lot of meetings with five or six people present. And that was our quorum. With five-member board, it's sort of like Lakisha said about DEI, you might as well just go away with the board. I, I would, that's why I recommend at least seven. I would be happiest with nine. And I will make sure that we have quorum to the best of my ability.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I don't know if this is a question for the city attorney or, I'm going to let you off the hook here, Murray. But is, is there a process for removing folks from committees that don't come? Because we got two issues here, right? We have, we have the structural issue because none of us own these positions, right? We occupy them. But if we have gone through years of people being appointed that don't participate, then I totally understand why that's a problem. It's a structural issue if losing two members is seen as gutting the board because nobody else shows up who's left. I mean, that's something we can address, right?
We've done it in the past with a couple of the boards where we have people who have not responded or not shown up at meetings. They come through our office, we do a resolution. The council has to formally act on that to remove the person. So they get notice, we send them letters and tell them, and then we bring you a resolution.
Would that typically be at the like, at the recommendation of the chair of that committee or is that?
It's usually a, the chair and the staff liaison person talk to me and, and get me the information.
Councilmember Ford, do you have further follow-up?
Yeah, I mean, I would hope that, is there a way we can go through a process and ask committee chairs about that? Because I, I don't think there's an ideal size. You know, I'm yielding to the recommendations of the, the folks that actually interviewed all the people at the, you know, during, during the process. But if folks are worried that the people that are left aren't participating, that's a problem we can solve and we should solve.
I would just say as an observation that when the boards were bigger, you had a little more room for error with people who didn't show up. And I think even with respect to DEI, part of the challenge is DEI was created in the middle of COVID. That did not lend itself well to, to becoming a regular attendee. I just, I think that that's, that's just, certainly just my opinion. But and the three people who have just, their terms have just ended were the people who were picked to get to the three-year term. And I believe the mayor probably picked those people because they, she probably felt them to be the most reliable people to show up. And I think if you looked at the attendance records, they were the folks that showed up. People who left were picking up an unexpired one- or two-year term. So then their terms would end. And so that, the turnover happened very rapidly on one end. And on the other end, you had pretty steady membership. So those are, I think, a victim of circumstances. Clearly, the committee said, keep DEI, keep, you know, keep all the committees except the ones they recommended doing away with. So it's really up to council. There's not a, this is not a, a staff issue. But I would say that people have been reluctant to, I'll use my term, not anybody else's, fire somebody from a border commission. It's been very difficult for council members or a council as a whole to do that. And we go to extremes to try to contact someone and it's only when we get absolutely zero response. Usually what we can do is get them to say, yeah, I don't have time. And I'm going to, would you at least send us a letter? Sometimes we get trouble just getting a letter. But I think eventually we just go, the person's abandoned their position. It's easier for us sometimes if somebody abandons their position at the city. We have a process, a policy that says, if you haven't been here for so many days, we consider you have resigned type of thing. So.
Oh, yeah. And I bring that up, and this is for me, for the council. I mean, I, right, obviously, I don't want to fire any volunteers. But if there's a perception out there that somehow a process is being applied evenly to all these different boards and commissions is somehow have, you know, so there's some sub-narrative there to gut specific committees, that's a perception problem that needs to be addressed. Because that clearly was not the intent of our, our process.
It's not about the intent, okay? So let's be clear. It's not about the intent, it's about the results. And when the results are, in fact, what they, we see them are, it's okay to look back at the process and say, when we decided to move this from how remaining numbers to five. And let's be clear, I'm not saying that DEI is falling under the exception in which they should remain at nine. I'm not saying that. I'm saying the process used to determine if someone's term will be recommended for renewal and who will be left on that board, we did not address that and we did not use a process by which we should employ so that it would not have this disparate impact that it has. So the intent is not what I'm taking issue with. But what I'm saying is sometimes when we take action and we already have something out there in the atmosphere, it supports that. And so that's what I'm saying, that this supports that theory, that thought process that some people have. And if that's not the intent, take that step back and look at what you left with these boards. Yes, it seems easy. This seems the easiest decision is to not renew those whose terms are expiring, unless it has a ridiculous impact. And if it does, then we need to figure out what, how we are going to address those boards that will be left useless because of the easy process we deploy. That's what I'm saying.
Agreed. I hear you, I hear you completely. So I'm trying to find a solution here.
In regards to process, so when we left that council meeting where we accepted the recommendations and gave staff direction to start moving forward, I guess two parts. One, it was briefly just touched on, I think by council member Ford and city manager Roloff, I wasn't going to put council in the spot of having to quote-unquote, fire volunteers. So it's not that it was the easiest process to just not renew. That was, it was the most efficient process to ensure an even application. This wasn't about people, it wasn't about personalities, it was about process. We've dealt with several years' worth of people and personality issues when it comes to appointments to boards and commissions, and I was not going to put us in that position. I don't disagree that there may be, for example, DEI, it could be some others, that are left with members who haven't been attending very well. That goes to the quality of, of those nominations that were put forward and their commitment to helping serve the community. If there are situations on any board and commission where, you know, somebody's not showing up for a couple of months and not communicating, they get regular emails from staff. Most boards and commissions, I know Ms. Davy was mentioning, you know, she, she works hard to make sure there's a quorum. She's interacting with her members. Staff liaisons are interacting with the members to make sure there's quorum. You know, if it goes months after month after month with no communication, then that should be brought forward, let us know that they're no longer interested in, in attending and we can remove them and subsequently replace them with a, someone who's interested in showing up and helping move the city forward. But so I was not going, I, I won't put the council in the spot of, if I renewed, if I put forth renewal recommendations and council, that they're, then, you know, they're part of consenting to those. And then a month later possibly turning around and saying, all right, well, we just, you know, reappointed three, but now we need to, to cut four who's up. I'm not going to have the, I'm not going to have a staff liaison be put in a position of telling us who's the most beneficial member. I'm not going to ask the board chairs because it's a subjective opinion on that. And quite honestly, you know, I don't sit on every board and commission and neither does every council member. So the best process was to not renew those people. As we saw tonight, put forth two names to SAB as alternates. They were full seats before, they're back. Being an alternate seat does not diminish your commitment, does not diminish your effectiveness when it comes to helping these boards and commissions and moving forward. You get to fully participate on, on the, on the local option committees. You get to fully participate in discussion and helping move topics forward and bringing expertise. But just come, you know, come time for vote, only five, you know, the, the five, seven, or nine can vote, depending on which board you're on. So the process, it was about process. It wasn't about people and it wasn't about personality. And I thought it was very important to do that. I do understand how it left a few boards and commissions. But that was evenly applied across every single board and commission, not selective to any single one, to ensure that there was a defense against this idea that, you know, one individual's attempting to just gut a board and commission and, and make them highly ineffective. I wanted to make sure that there was not that, that option based upon the process itself. Just a little information on my actions the last several weeks. If council so chooses to give direction to, to staff to either A, leave them at their current numbers or change into a different number, at that point, I would start reaching back out to those who, who weren't renewed in certain circumstances. Maybe not all, it just depends, to start, you know, filling those seats back up but waiting council's direction, final direction really on those, those last few boards and commissions to see exactly what they want staff to bring forward. One last thing for me was I respected the work that deputy mayor Erickson and former council member Miller put in, the time and the effort. And I agreed with their assessment on reducing the numbers down to, to five across all the optional committees, the local option ones, to create a consistent atmosphere amongst our boards and commissions. Because there have been some that have ballooned quite a bit. I understand the need for diverse opinions and diverse backgrounds and thoughts. But, because we could have it, well, nine's not enough, we should be at 11. And then 11's not enough, we should be at 13. And then it just gets out of control. And that's where we actually got to with several of these, where we're now at nine or 10. Five is a very reasonable number if they're willing to attend and show up. If not, we'll look for additional replacements to help fill those boards and commissions. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Um, just clarifying process, I think. So I think there's confusion around, so if, if there were to be any change to the size of a border commission, any of the optional ones, that would require a change to the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. And so when, when you recommended not to reappoint those whose terms expired at the end of May, did that, we would still have open seats on those boards because there would be, we haven't changed, changed the size in any way?
That is correct.
Okay. So depending on what kind of direction we give, we, those folks may either be, you may choose to reappoint them or there may be new folks who are appointed or depends on what the size is.
Correct, yeah. Councilmember Wrestler?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think what we have is different responsibilities, right? I mean, we have the council that we set, Lynn, tell me if I'm wrong, but we set the parameters of the size of the boards and committees and the time and the days. And so I think that's pretty cut and dried. And then we also, the way we run the council here is the mayor, either he or she, in this case, he, determines, you know, who, who goes on. And they come to the council and we vote on that. on. And they come to the council, and we vote on that. I remember, you know, back when I was mayor, I got rid of some people that were on boards and commissions for 20 years. And I think, Mr. Roloff was around at that time, but that created some controversy, that how dare you get rid of someone that wanted to continue to serve when they've been there for 20 years? Because someone wanted to be on the board and commission for 20 years, and they were overlooked all the time. So I think every mayor has his or her own rationale for what they're doing. And, you know, I think, kind of unfortunately here, we have to set some kind of standard. Because if it's nine for one, and then it's five for one, and it's seven for one, then everyone says, well, how come they get to play with these toys and I don't? And then, you know, then, then the count, then it gets down to the council, and Sally wants to be on the council, but the mayor wants Cindy to be on the council. Am I gonna say, no, I don't want that? And you're gonna create problems with that. So I think we're kind of going down a slippery slope here. We set the standards, the mayor comes to us for the people that are on there. I don't know what he does. It's, I don't know if it's my business or not, but he does that. And I trust that he's doing a good job with it. If someone wants to come forward and say he's not, and there's, there's a reason for it, I'm certainly willing to listen to that. But I don't think that's gonna happen. So let's set the standards, and how people get put on the boards and commissions, let the mayor do his job. And he gets elected. You, you know, mayor is a two-year term. If he does a terrible job getting people on boards and commissions, well, that's one of the things he's gonna have to run against next time he or she runs. So just, I think we set the standards, the people come forward, however that works out, I'm not gonna get involved in that. That's not, I don't like a council position, role. Again, I think that's the mayor's role. So I, I think, you know, nine, nine people for this, this case here, sounds logical to me. I mean, they, they have the people, they have the expertise, they have the, with the university and whatever. I mean, it'd all sound logical to me. So in that case, nine sounds good, but other boards and committees maybe not. But then again, well, which ones are gonna be nine? Which ones are gonna be five? So I think this is kind of a job for the mayor, sorry, Matt. I think this is kind of a job for the mayor to maybe sit down with. We have council representatives, this is where, I think maybe council representatives should get away from this. This is one of the reasons why. But if we're gonna have council representatives on these boards and commissions, ask them. I mean, this, we're all big boys and girls. And if we feel that someone's not up to par on a board or commission, tell the mayor. So we can, you know, kind of go around that person, or find someone that wants to serve, and we'll do a great job. So let's set the standards, and let the mayor do his job.
Councilmember Stevenson, and then followed by Councilmember Bula.
Yeah. So I just wanted to chime in. I don't, I don't think I have a problem with the way you handled it. I think, I think you did it without subjectivity. I think you, you tried to make sure there was, maybe the perception was not received well. But I think the, the way you handled it, without having us to interview every single committee member, that would be a little ridiculous. But I do, I do think that the Sustainability Board, your comments, I would like to maybe see them stay at nine. I know some of these other committees have a hard time meeting quorum, and I don't want anyone to think that we're trying to gut committees, because it's punitive, because we're saying you're not meeting quorum. I think in some cases, we just, maybe we just didn't want this many people. It gets a little messy when you have a bunch of voices in the room, but it sounds like you guys are working well. So yeah, I mean, that's my, my two cents on the topic. I, again, I, I think the process that you took was, was something that you were trying to take subjectivity out of the, out of the equation. I think you were trying to be, make sure to, to apply equally to all the commissions, so.
Councilmember Bula.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple thoughts that popped in my head. One of the goals of the report that Deputy Mayor Erickson and Bill Miller submitted to us was to potentially reduce a couple of, number of boards, and we did that. One of the goals of that was to reduce the total number of volunteers that we needed. I, I know that there was a lot of board members that were serving on two boards, and that was the max that you could, because they were so recruited in two boards. And like, how could we, you know, fill up all these seats that we had? And so a lot of people were being asked to serve in two boards. So now hopefully, people can focus on one and do one well. That is, that is one of the, the things that I saw in there that I really liked. I do like that in there, as Deputy Mayor Erickson said, that it gave us the flexibility, that yes, the standard is five, and the five going forward, but in a unusual situation, that we can adjust that as needed. And I think that this is one of those situations for the Sustainability Board, especially since we have the expertise that is already there, asking to serve, and especially for the paycheck that we give them. I, I would think it should be council's direction to do that. Would that be a separate motion, that we do that? How, how do we facilitate that?
Go ahead, City Attorney. Since you pressed your button.
I pressed my button.
You don't do it very often.
So right now, if we would follow the direction from the report on boards and commissions, it would say that I would reduce, draft an ordinance to reduce the size of those committees to five members with two alternates, four citizens, and then two alternates, which would also be citizen members, and a council member. So we're talking, again, about DEI, sustainability, long-range finance, the Parks Board, and then museum and, and public arts, which are gonna be combined. And what I kind of need to know before I can write the ordinance is, do you want, you know, for each of those committees, is five members, four citizens, plus a council member, plus two alternate? So six citizens total, and a council member. What you want, or if you want something different for all of them, some of them, that's the direction I need.
In terms of procedural, we're in a space where, right now, we're not voting on the final anyways, so really, it's more, if you say, council.
You get another kick at this can.
Counsel, would you be okay with seven members on DEI, and all of a sudden, there was forehead shaking? That's direction.
Okay.
And then we're gonna have a final vote in another meeting or two.
And another way of putting, if you gave us absolutely no direction tonight, we're coming back at a subsequent meeting, saying, there's five members, four, plus one council member, plus two alternates. And that's what we would generically give you all. And then you, at that time, you could say, I thought more about it, and I want to change this one to seven, this one to nine. That would, you, you would have to do that through the amendment process. What we're trying to do is minimize the amendments, so you give us what you want to see on face value. We can give you the four plus one plus two. We know that right now, based on the resolution you adopted. But if you want us to tweak it a little bit, as the deputy mayor said, there was provisions in there. There was enough language in there, if you want to change it, you have every right to do it. That's, that's a governance issue that rests solely with council.
It's a little easier for me if you give it to me ahead of time, and I can draft that way, then try and wing it.
See, communication is a good thing. Weird.
Yeah.
Okay. So DEI is, you, is there, are they all right now at nine? You said DEI, SAB?
D and, yeah.
Sorry.
DEI is at nine.
And that is eight plus one, right?
No.
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 That is nine citizen members.
Nine citizens, okay. I can list them off if you want. So DEI is nine members, there's a council liaison with no voting.
Okay.
And two alternates. Sustainability is eight members, one council rep with voting.
Okay.
Two alternates. Long-range finance is currently a total of nine, it's eight citizens with plus one council member voting, and two alternates. Parks Board is the same, eight citizens, one council member, two alternates. If you're gonna make any suggestions, I just want, I want to make just one more comment.
Please do.
If you don't mind? Okay. Two quick things. One, it's gonna be blunt, and it'll come across as a little brash, but that's fine. A reminder that boards and commissions serve the council. They don't serve themselves. They serve as advisory boards to serve us, to bring us suggestions on policy and initiatives. That is their purpose. I understand that there are, you know, there, there's passion in certain spaces, but it is ultimately council's decision on how many, and for what need. Two, you did recently approve a brand-new committee, the Transportation Committee. We consolidated three committees into one, taking roughly 20-plus volunteers, and putting them into five. So I didn't hear any thoughts or complaints or concerns when council did that at the last meeting. So just as a heads up, you already did approve a brand-new one with the new parameters, just as a little food for thought, I guess, in terms of agreed with the parameters under certain circumstances, I guess. And just, I think uniformity is something strong, a strong comment that came out of that, that recommendation. A new starting point, a new, a new baseline for these boards and commissions that, that, that serve the council. Those are my, just my couple of final thoughts.
Can I suggest maybe knocking out the, the ones I have not heard anything about? Long-range finance, Parks Board, museum and public arts, four, one, and two. I see enough I'm not.
I see some changing.
There's your direction on those? Okay.
So that leaves.
SAB.
SAB and.
I'll bring it up. SAB. Yep. So SAB, currently at nine total, plus two alternates. Thoughts on SAB? Somebody wants to throw a number out? We'll see if heads are shaken. If anything, I think nine's too many. I'd be more comfortable with a total of seven. That would be my, and that would be the same for DEI, in my opinion, as well. I think nine is a.
Question of that.
Plus two alternates is a large number.
Are you thinking it's seven plus two?
That would, that would be, if, if we're not gonna do five, I think, in my opinion, having done, done this.
So it would be, just so I'm clear, six.
Yes.
Plus one.
Plus two alternates.
Plus two.
That would be my recommendation, if I was.
So for DEI, the council reps still would not have voting?
I think, my apologies. Yeah, we're on SAB for this one, but you are right. Yeah, so, yeah, it would be.
So then, would the, for the SAB, would the council rep have voting?
They, they do now.
They do now.
They would continue. And by the way, you're at the point where, if they're, if she's adjusting the, the ordinance, if you want to give the, the council liaison voting rights on DEI, you can do that as well. We can tell them now to, to change that as well. So.
Let's get to that in a second. Let's, let's cover SAB first. The six plus one plus two, I can, I can live with that. Like, I mean, it's not ideal what I'd want. Like, I'd want 13, 15, maybe, because it is great. But I think the, the, you know, so it'd be eight citizens total, plus the one council liaison. It brings it closer to the five size of the standardization that we're trying to get to, still represent, still respects, hopefully, most of the, the knowledge and expertise that is on there. So six plus one plus two would be my understanding of what you're, you're recommending, and I can, I can live with that.
Can I get a couple more head nods, one way or the other? Okay.
You got four on that one, at least. Okay. DEI, currently at nine full citizens member seats, one council rep without voting, and then two alternates. Thoughts on DEI? Actually, I apologize. I don't know when you clicked. Councilmember Hayes.
No one ever does. So I feel it necessary for me to repeat myself, because I don't think I was heard. I have no problem, and I'm not taking an objection, to DEI fitting within the recommendations of the report. That was never the concern with DEI. So I don't take a position on it should be at nine, like sustainability. What I did say was that it was the process used to get it down to the five that results in DEI being essentially non-existent. That was what I said.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hayes. Councilmember Stevenson.
That was gonna be my question to you. And I guess, also, would you want to have voting rights on that?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I think that makes sense, because it.
I think DEI is the only one that does not have one. I think it would be appropriate for it to be standard across the board.
Sure.
Yeah, I would, I would want to recommend the same thing we just did with SAB, and do six plus one plus two for DEI, giving us the, the ability to add a couple more powerful members back onto DEI if needed, a couple more applicants, and then address the, the attendance and, and board issues aggressively as we go. Not being a member of the DEI and that liaison, I don't know the specifics, but I can, I can understand and respect that, you know, if it is something where we have to look at that attendance and that population aggressively, for the people that are showing up and doing the work, then let's do that.
I have two numbers right now. Four, one, and two, and six, one, and two.
I think for DEI, I, I'm supportive of the six, one, and two, with the council liaison having voting rights.
Does anyone, I mean, I, do we have access to the attendance records? Because I'm, I truly want to understand. How many members are there that aren't active right now? How do we?
Yeah, I would, we can get that. We'd have to compile it. I think Councilmember Hayes raises a valid question.
Sure.
And it is kind of unfinished business. And it wasn't in the scope of the study, but it's clearly an issue that, that, that's been raised. So that might be a separate issue that maybe the mayor and Councilmember Hayes can discuss that, because Councilmember Hayes has direct experience with it. But we can certainly get the number. But I think anecdotally, I think we know where those are, because taking a look at a few minutes, you'll see very clearly the absence records. And I'm, I'm not here to out any, any.
Sure.
Person and single that person out. But there's a definite pattern to what Councilmember Hayes has pointed out.
Actually, I want to, I want to pull back. Hey, Councilmember Hayes, is your recommendation to go with four, one, and two? Or is your, is it that you're not objecting to four, one, and two, or six, one, and two?
Again, I'm not objecting to following the recommendations that are within the report when it comes to DEI.
Sure.
I only believe that the exception would be sustainability, which is how I started out. That was that, the exception I saw was for sustainability.
Correct. So then maybe the better, I, I would like to see at least us move it to a voting option in the DEI, even if we don't change it off of the five member. So then a four, one, and two number.
Four citizen members.
Four citizen members.
One council voting, and two alternates.
Okay.
You have direction on that?
No, no, but no, quickly, this is, I, no, because you mentioned citizen members. That's the only community that allows non-citizen members, correct?
Yes, and it currently allows up to two. Doesn't require two, it allows up to two. So you may want to change that. That would be, thank you for bringing it up. Forgot all about it.
Is that citizen? I didn't want to make sure that direction.
Yeah.
That being given, wanted to make sure.
For council's full disclosure on that one, when DEI was commit, created, there was this idea that having someone from outside the community could, could bring value. They are the only board and commission that allows that, to have a non-citizen voting member a part of their makeup.
Of the optionals.
Of the optionals, correct. So just for clarification, just so all, all are aware. So right now, the, the direction is four plus one council voting, and two alternates. And just for, for clarification, it's my expectation to connect with Councilwoman Hayes, as well as the staff liaison on DEI, to chat about how effective some of those members are. And then I would expect for council then to see a, a resolution in the future, potentially removing some members from there if, if they've had poor attendance, and repopulating as we see fit. If there's no other discussion on this one, we'll move on to future workshops. We have, June 27th, council has a housing workshop at 5:00 PM. That is a, that is a Tuesday night, right? Yes, that's our next council meeting, so 5:00 PM. That'll run right up to 5:45. If there is, having been through a fair amount of workshops, and this is a, this is a deep one, if there is information that staff can provide well in advance, at the very least at, you know, the Friday beforehand, in terms of PowerPoint or whatever you're gonna present, for us to be able to get.
of PowerPoint or whatever you're going to present, for us to be able to get through so that allows us enough time to actually have a discussion, that would be-
I'll be, I may have a meeting with Ms. Knightforth and her staff shortly, so we'll have stuff ready for everybody.
Appreciate that. The June 28th, we have our first budget workshop. This is rearing the CIP. That's at 5:00 PM. That's generally about a two-hour meeting, if you're putting it in your calendar, roughly five to seven.
Yeah, and I would say, based on some of the discussion earlier this evening regarding special assessments, given the fact that we're doing this meeting, it's probably a good time. Mr. Robby has already prepared some estimates of what I reported back to you at previous meeting, so we're going to go through those numbers. So I think we'll be able to share those with you. That's going to be a key part of the whole discussion because that's, it's been there for a while, and council members, both old and new, are interested in this topic, so we can get that for you.
And then, last workshop, July 20, actually closed session, excuse me, July 25th, we'll be going into closed session after the council meeting with City Manager Roloff regarding his mid-year review and anything-
We got to catch up.
Yep.
Yes.
Anything you want to add?
Um, I think, I'll, I'll be sharing just some documents with everyone, just of the goals that we had set up for city manager, so we can review those. That's kind of how we typically talk through how things are going. And then I'll also share the, the form that we usually go through at the yearly review, just to guide the conversation.
Perfect. And then can we, we should be able to expect a second quarter update prior to that meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember, statements and announcements. Here's your time to report back any, anything from boards and commissions or make any other announcements. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I got a text from Amy Albright over at Discover Oshkosh, and there's some good stuff for their new economic impact report related to tourism, new numbers. The overall economic impact of tourism in Oshkosh, up 13.9% this year. Direct visitor spending is up 19% to 72 million. Tourism jobs are up 3.4% in the overall tax revenue impact, even though we know we don't get a lot of that because it's the sales tax, is up 11.2%. So that's good news. Tourism is coming back.
Very positive information. Any other? Well, then I'll go. Just a, a brief one. I know Parks Director isn't here, but I'm going to give a little plug. So tonight was supposed to be the kickoff night for the free concert series that the Parks Department and City of Oshkosh puts on at Leech. Obviously, we had some poor weather tonight. They're supposed to be a fun, a fun band. I think it was Glam Band was supposed to be there. That was, I know Ray and, and the staff was very excited for that. Hopefully, we'll, we'll hear about a, a reschedule on that one. But check out the Parks Department's website for, for future shows and hit their social media up. It's a, it's a nice community event for free, several Tuesday nights throughout the summer. And then I'd be remiss if I also didn't follow that up with, Waterfest is kicking off on Thursday nights, and a, a nice venue for several great bands to come, come to Oshkosh and, and take part in some festivities along the water. So just a little plug for both of those. And Director Robbie, Public Works Director Robbie.
Uh, yes, you brought up Waterfest, so I, I thought I would take an opportunity to inform everyone that we did just receive notice from the Canadian National Railroad. They do need to be closing the CP Avenue Crossing, starting tomorrow morning through Friday afternoon, so that will have an impact on getting out of Waterfest. Broad Street will be open on both sides, so traffic leaving Waterfest will be able to get to Broad and then head north on Broad. Unfortunately, they identified some, some issues that they felt they needed to address urgently, so they are, they did just notify us earlier today that they will be starting that work tomorrow morning. So you brought up Waterfest. I thought it was important to get that information out. We'll be, there was actually information released on our social media account just prior to the meeting as well.
Appreciate that. Always good to let them know that there's going to be some traffic impacts in a, in a high-busy area on Thursday night, so. Other than that, if there's no other announcements and statements, we'll turn over to City Manager for his part of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to offset his bad news with some good news.
Thank you.
I didn't put it in here, but Friday at 10:00 AM at Menominee Park is the dedication for the plaques to honor Chief Oshkosh. I want to thank the museum staff. They've been working so closely with members of Menominee Nation. I think it's going to be a wonderful event. If you did go to the powwow with the museum a few years ago, a lot of the entertainers that were there are going to be there again. If you didn't go to see it, I highly recommend it. That's just my opinion, but I think it'll be a wonderful event. I have a few memos in the agenda packet regarding some professional services contracts and some cooperative purchases we've been doing. The one I would point out, number 44, is the West Snell Road cleanup over there at 41 and Snell Road, the junkyard that we've been, enforcement, we're, we're getting some outside services to help with the cleanup, some firm who's specialized in that. So we thought that was appropriate to do. And then while I sometimes gloss over outstanding issues, I think there's a handful of things that I, I would like to point out. You know, back in 2020, we had discussions about community conversations to address racism. I had the pleasure to attend the Juneteenth celebration at the Leech Amphitheater on Saturday. I got to meet five members of the Oshkosh 94, had a wonderful conversation with them, and I, I gave a little speech and, and talked about the need to apologize to them on behalf of the community, and I did that. And I thought it was a great way to start healing. And I was approached by multiple members of the community who want to assist us in doing better outreach to the community. So I was very encouraged by that and had a great time on top of that. So I think that the Juneteenth celebration will continue. I'm not sure for, I was only there for about an hour and it was a four-hour event. So if you didn't have a chance to go see it, it was a lot of fun. Encourage you to go see it. Other ones I want to talk about are the, the statewide initiatives to improve the shortfall. I gave you some good news from the state. It still isn't official yet, but shared revenue, looks like the minimum increase is going to be 20%, which will amount to about an additional 1.92 million for shared revenue, which pretty much gets us back to 1990, but it's certainly a much well-needed improvement. That will certainly help us as we talk about budget upcoming. There are some provisions in there that restrict how much it goes to, but I can assure you, because it's really, some of the increases need to go to public safety and public works, well, that's 60% of our general fund. We will not have a problem meeting the requirements of that law because between wages and benefits, that'll probably gobble up the entire increase. But the biggest benefit that we're getting, even though 1.92 million is, is nothing to shake a stick at, the growth factor that we're going to receive, increase in shared revenue commensurate with increase in statewide sales tax, that's the big winner because we've never had a growth factor added to shared revenue. So even if it's up 5%, 5% will be a half-million-dollar increase, over and above what I just told you. And you do that for two years, you've got a 10% increase. You do that for four years, you got a 20% increase, which is what we're getting this time. So the increase is going to be great, but the growth factor is really the thing that we can look forward to because now we can start, we'll know what the sales tax growth was the prior year by around this time of year. We don't have to wait for, to see what the state's going to give us. We're going to know, sales tax went up this much. We're going to know how to plan for our budgets much better because we're literally waiting until the end of September to, to, to find out what the, the manna from heaven is from the state. Now, because we know the growth factor is built in, we're going to have a much better way to budget because we're going to be able to get estimates earlier and can plug them in. We'll be better prepared to present the budget to council. So those are little things that comes from a former budget analyst that I think are really important for us. Let's see, Boards and Commission Study, you've had plenty of discussion. You don't need to hear anything more from me. And staff has responded to a counterproposal regarding sanitary district negotiations, and we're going to be scheduling a follow-up meeting with the districts. We are making progress, and I think both sides are now motivated. There's incentives on both sides to get this done. So, and Lynn is shaking her head, so she shares that optimism, and I think it's good for everybody. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I hear silence.
That's all I have.
I'll take the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.